...session to address Labor's International Collective bargaining issues.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so there's a motion. Will you be participating?
I will second the motion to go into executive session, but I will be recusing myself because I do have a conflict of interest on this particular issue.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. It was my preference that we, with so much being in the media and now already out there in the public domain, that we not go into executive session. And Jerry, you had advised me that that wasn't possible.
It's not an option. We have to go into executive session for labor unless you bargain with the union about open session.
Okay. And then the only other option is if the employees were participating and chose to make it open?
No, it's not even their choice. It's the union's choice.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please?
I will say aye.
Okay. You said aye. Given the parameters that council has provided, then I would also vote in favor. That's unanimous. So we're going to go into executive session and we'll be returning. The anticipated time is seven o'clock that we'll return to open session. I'd ask that anybody who's here for something else, please leave so that we can move on with the item on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, for the benefit of the record, we're returning from executive session now. It's 7:02. The first item on the agenda is signing of the warrant.
A motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Next is approval of the March 17th meeting minutes.
Motion, Bill.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor that those are both unanimous. Now I'd like to go into something different, give you some background, give the town some background. It was, oh, I would say a few months ago that Rick and I were discussing looking at what some communities had done with regard to declaring and proclaiming their community as a Purple Heart town. So it's my distinct honor to introduce the veterans agent. Along with the veterans agent, we have some esteemed visitors here. So I want to also introduce at the same time Representative John Fernandez and Senator Dick Moore as participating in this. And if you would, please do the introductions for those that are here this evening.
Gentlemen, I'd like to introduce Leo Agnew, Commander of the Purple Heart Massachusetts Chapter. Mr. Agnew.
Thank you. Welcome to our Purple Heart Communities. And before we make our presentation, I'd like to have Senator Moore and Representative Fernandez come up and make their presentation and their proclamation.
Well, thank you, Commander. Are we okay with standing?
Oh, please, please, whatever you feel comfortable with.
That way we'll be, I'll be short.
He's always shorter.
You did pitch him a softball, Senator.
Oh, thank you. Nice. We happen to think that the designation, sorry. We happen to think that the designation of Milford as a Purple Heart community honoring the veterans is something perhaps long overdue because the town of Milford has for many years been supportive of veterans and provided a lot of assistance to many veterans from over, I'm sure, going back to the revolution, but certainly the Civil War. And has been a welcoming community for so many veterans. And it's very appropriate that the Purple Heart Organization recognized the town officially in that way. And so Representative Fernandez and I, in anticipation of them providing you with actually the official designation, if they decide in a few minutes not to give it to you, we have to resend these.
They will have messed this up.
Send these, but otherwise, I think you're okay. And this is a citation from the Senate worth much more than House citations. These are much more rare that we provide them. "To the town of Milford, in recognition of your designation as a Purple Heart town for your efforts to honor all local veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice serving in all wars and recognizing August 7th as Purple Heart Day each year." And it's certainly one people who receive Purple Heart either may have been killed in action or were certainly wounded in action. So we, it's, these are veterans who have gone above and beyond really the call of duty to defend our country and our democracy. We're so grateful to the veterans who are here as well as to veterans that they represent. So I'm happy to present this citation to you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll turn the microphone over to my colleague.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and particularly to the Purple Heart Association. As the Senator was speaking about the great veteran services in Milford, I was thinking, you know, I was thinking back to my days as a selectman, which I was saying to Brian, I had started the day in the school committee old meeting room, which you would all remember, and finish in a selectman's office, but it goes back to 75. But then I actually, I realized my introduction to great veteran services in Milford go back further than that. My mother's, one of my mother's brothers, all of them had served in World War II in the service, but one of them came home from the service with what today we would have diagnosed as post-traumatic stress without question. He spent time in the Veterans Hospital, spent most of his life in the care of a nursing home, but my grandparents, of course, and family tried to bring him home often to reintegrate. But at every turn, my introduction was that when he was in the house, the vets agent was at the door and bringing services directly to our families. So we do have a long history of service and attempting to help veterans to adjust when they come home. And we know that today, that's a very, very difficult thing to do. So being able to be recognized in this fashion, it's an honor to be a part of this and to be able to bring the best wishes of the House of Representatives to the town of Milford in recognition of being declared a Purple Heart community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had explained to our visitors and the commander and to some of the Purple Heart recipients here, which we'll make sure we introduce in just a moment, that, you know, this is also something, and John, Representative Fernandez, I appreciate you sharing your personal thoughts and the impact that it had on your family. You know, my background is also my father's career military, and so we traveled a great deal from base to base. And I got to see firsthand what the important service that the servicemen and women provide to our country in terms of defense. And I think too often, we forget that. So it was that discussion with Rick that we tried to establish this. And it just through the course of events over the last few months, it's been difficult to get it together on the right day, at the right meeting time. And so I'm happy that we're able to do this tonight. And so Commander, please, if you would.
Yes. After I make the presentation, we'd like to get a group photo, and we'd like the Purple Heart recipients from locally involved in the picture. And we put it on our website, and I'll give you the address. Before I make the presentation, I'd just like to give you a brief rundown about the Purple Heart and seventeen, and why we requested your honor August 7th. On August 7th, 1782, in Newburgh, New York, in Hudson, George Washington designed a heart-shaped belt with white lace. And he called this the Badge of Merit. And he presented it to his officers and art commission officers and some enlisted men for heroic deeds during the Revolutionary War. In 1990, 32, excuse me, General Douglas MacArthur went to Congress with a design with a purple draped ribbon with white trim and a heart-shaped medal with George Washington bust on it. And he suggested that this be awarded to those killed or wounded by hostile fire in combat. And that become the Purple Heart. It's the oldest military medal still being issued today. Since the Civil War, there's 2 million Purple Heart recipients in this country. And with that, we'd like to present to the town of Milford, Military Order Purple Heart and Department of Massachusetts Combat Wounded Veterans, would like to present the certificate of acknowledgement to the town of Milford, Massachusetts, being designated as the Town and Commonwealth of Massachusetts to be known as a Purple Heart community, honoring all who made the ultimate sacrifice and shed their blood defending our country in all wars from Milford, Massachusetts, and honoring August 7th as Purple Heart Day. We'd like to present this to the order selectmen.
Thank you, Commander. It's a great honor.
Thank you.
So I think, well, John, would you like to introduce the Purple Heart recipients we have from Milford?
We have three with us, and I hope they don't mind that I call upon them, from the youngest to the oldest. Joe Schuris, Joe, is it 89? 89?
89?
Yeah. 89 years old. Stand up.
I'm close. I'm bumping 90. Yes, 89.
And Joe Schuris from Milford. Next in age, Ralph Steves, 91.
I'm bumping 90 here.
And Pat Santucci, 93. I'd like to mention three other names. I sent them invitations to come, but for some reason, they weren't here. Al Landzetter is a Purple Heart recipient. Peter Veu, former police officer.
That's right.
Joe Manella.
Okay.
Joe Manella.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you.
Once again, thank you to the Purple Heart recipients. In addition to these folks, thank you. All right, and you said you'd like the opportunity to take a photograph?
Yeah, get a group photo, yeah.
All right, why don't we do that right now?
Maybe you can put it on the website.
All right, so we're going to take a five-minute recess in order to facilitate that process. Thank you. All right. So after a brief recess and the ceremony for declaring Milford a Purple Heart community, we are going to return to open session now. The next item on the agenda, I'm bouncing around a little bit, is citizen participation. Is there anybody here who's not scheduled with the board for any agenda item that would like to address the board? All right, please, please come on up. And just for the benefit of the folks at home and the recorder, minutes recorder, if you could state your name and address?
My name is Jamie Wheelock.
Sir, sit down, relax.
Yeah, you can sit down.
All right.
Or you want to sit over there? I think that's easier for the TV people.
All right.
Yeah.
My name's Jamie Wheelock. I live at Conifav in Milford, Massachusetts. I wanted to ask you guys some questions about the warrant item, agenda thing, the 200 acres for the Conservation Commission at Lake Louisa.
Okay, just for benefit of process, I'll explain. Everything that you have and any questions may not be addressed this evening, but they're addressed to the Chair. And normally, if there's not an agenda item, we may do one of the few things. We may ask you to see the town administrator to follow up, or we may schedule an individual meeting with you as a scheduled item on the agenda, depending on how the board members feel about that. But also want to allow you a few minutes to voice any concerns, any questions. But I just want to let you know, we may not have all the answers to those questions this evening.
Sure.
But if you could address them to me, it'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. I was, I don't think it's surprising that the Conservation Commission would like the entire 200 acres and that they would like to put them under conservation restriction. That makes perfect sense that the Conservation Commission feels that way. I was wondering who else, what other town boards or committees have weighed in on all the potential uses of that land and what boards they would be. And I think that the selectmen are the supporters of the 200 acres CR.
We've not taken a vote on this yet, but we are investigating the potential options to place land in a trust or put land under Conservation Commission guidance or control.
But it is coming from your, it is being supported by the selectmen?
The impetus for putting that in has actually been brewing for quite a while, and we've talked about it at various meetings, but go ahead. Your point is?
I went to this Conservation Committee meeting, and I think they've said that it was actually the selectmen who were pushing this item, so I came here. Is it inconceivable that the town can both protect the watershed and use some portion of that 200 acres in ways that are even more beneficial to the town than passive recreation? That's the question I have. I'm surprised that the proposal is to put the entire 200 acres under conservation restriction.
Okay.
So that was all I wanted to know.
There's a potential for a variety of uses on that land. It's been through to town meeting to purchase that land. One of the commitments that was made at that time, specifically the Consigli property, is that it wouldn't be built out. It would protect it from development, and it would be used for passive recreation because there was a great deal of anxiety in the area for expansion of, say, public playing fields and whatnot. But your point is well taken. The fact of the matter is, that land might be used for other things. It could, we could expand our wellfields on that land. We might, for all we know, some future town meeting might want to use it for passive solar collection, but still consistent with environmental fossil fuel reduction and some of the things that are possible. They may want to expand the trails. There could be a host of things that they may want to do going forward. And these are just some things that come to mind. I don't know what the future will bring.
My limited understanding of the CR is if you don't specify the exact potential uses and the exact areas where they will happen, nothing like a solar array can go in there, just because you talk about it.
Yeah, and for your benefit, it was also some of the reservation I had about a land trust that protected it to the extent that it put it under the control of somebody outside of the community. This board has not voted on it, and town meeting certainly has not voted on it. That would be two things that we could do, and that is part of the plan that we're working up with town council, town planner, town administrator, and others.
Great.
So we're working, we're working through that. That has not been decided exactly which options we would take. It's not my desire personally to preclude other boards or other towns or other town meetings from what they might want to do with some of that land. And I'm not sure I could think of all the things that might be appropriate for the town and a good idea to put it into a land trust and be able to document that well enough.
Great.
That's my concern.
I don't, I'm not actually against the CR, but I'm hesitant to do the entire 200 acres. And the language I've seen about the proposal, the warrant item, make it, talk about it being essentially the entire 200 acres.
It is.
And not a study or a proposal of how much of the land to be put into. So I'm concerned about the language that is the warrant item.
Jamie, are you a town meeting member as well?
No.
Okay. I would encourage you, first of all, these are your seats, so this is what citizen participation is for. I appreciate the fact that you've come here tonight to express that concern. It's something that the board members can think about in their deliberations, but I'd also encourage you to be a town meeting member because an article like this is not taken lightly. It requires two-thirds majority before any land that's the town's property can be conveyed to another party. So, in a trust.
Great. That's all I needed to say.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Next item on the agenda is application for entertainment license from 99 Restaurant and Pub. Is there a representative here?
Yeah.
Go ahead and have a seat. Are you, you're representing the applicant?
Yes.
And your name is?
James Felder.
Okay, so you've filled out the application personally?
Yes.
On behalf of 99 Restaurant and Pub? And you're seeking to put live music in on weekdays from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 12:00 noon to 11:30 p.m.? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think everything is in order here. I'll let you talk about some of the things you'd like to do and what's changing there.
Sure. Well, first of all, our restaurant's getting ready to undertake a pretty good renovation. In April 17th, we'll be doing a grand opening party, and that was the initial reason to get the entertainment in. So we'd like to make a kind of a big event and have just, have a band in there playing and do a ribbon cutting. We're going to be donating a $1,000 check to the Blackstone Boys and Girls Club and try to make it a good event for it. And then just moving forward, we'd like to be able to have the opportunity to have more events like that take place.
Okay. Now I'll go to the members of the board to see if they have any questions or comments.
No, Mr. Chairman, no. Good luck, sir.
Thank you. Brian?
No, no questions.
Okay. I think everything's in order. I don't have any questions. It makes sense to me. I appreciate the hours of operation, so I don't see it, especially where you're located, being disruptive to neighbors, any of that. The chief's here now. Any comments or thoughts about live entertainment at that location? We don't normally go to you, but while you're here, we'd ask.
Issues or concerns.
All right. I'll read, I'm sorry, you did provide, I'll also read from a letter that we went out to the department heads, as would be typical and customary for this board to reach out. We went to the building commissioner, and as common, it's IC zoned. It's allowable use. It's important to remember that the occupancy load is 176, and the buildings and restroom, the building and restroom is handicapped accessible. Town planner states no concerns. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer, no issues or concerns. And as the police chief just stated, the police chief has no issues or concerns, and neither does the fire chief. So everything is in order, and I'm going to wish you well. I'll take a motion now.
Motion, seconded.
All right, that's, everyone is in favor, so that's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck, sir.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next, we're going to bump the agenda around a little bit, even more. We've got Chief of Police, Tom Loughlin, who's going to talk about traffic aids and specifically speed sign determinations from Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
As the board asked, myself and Vani Reese, the town engineer, Scott Christofoli, the highway surveyor, to go out and take a look at the speed signs throughout the community to evaluate them and then to go through the process with Mass DOT with regard to the posting of those signs. I have sent out to Mass DOT 25 signs at this point in time, providing them with speed data and traffic counts, as well as all of the crash reports that occurred on that roadway or in that section of roadway. For each of those 25 signs, they did respond back efficiently. I mean, the response back from Mass DOT ranged between eight and 22 days, and we had a response back to the request. I have to do them piecemeal because I have two of the measuring devices, two of the boxes, so, you know, we're moving them about. I still have 11 more locations to conduct the survey on with regards to speed. The net result is Mass DOT, in looking at the, they look at the 85th percentile, so vehicles, what are they traveling at, 85% of vehicles, what speed or, and below. In each of the cases, Mass DOT has come back and indicated that in accordance with Chapter 90, Section 18 of the general laws, they would not recommend the posting of a speed sign at all of those locations, the 25, with the exception of the streets that are in rolling green in the complex. So they've told me to go to the next step of gathering actual radar data, so I have to position police officers there with radar, and they record the speeds of vehicles for a period of time. And then there's some other information I have to pull together for those signs. And they're willing to then evaluate and make a determination whether the speed signs of 25 miles an hour should remain within that apartment complex. With regard to the other signs, they actually indicated, for instance, Congress Street at the town park, there are signs indicating 20 miles per hour. The state has said that based upon the information I provided them to date, they would actually, if they were to post a sign there, it would exceed the statutory speed sign. So let me step, just one second. Statutorily, that's a thickly settled district, so with no sign, it's 30 miles an hour. We run that risk of sending to them and saying, please evaluate that particular roadway in which the 85th percentile was somewhere around 38, 39 miles an hour. And they could come back and say, no, the sign should be 35. So you actually increase the speed limit rather than decrease it. So, you know, my recommendation to the board is, as I've received these back, I had a number of them in the first memo, and then secondarily, there was another memo in which I sent to the board and indicated that my recommendation is that we remove those signs rather than continue to push the process to the point where they may come back and put a higher speed limit than if the sign's not there, because it would be 30 miles an hour. The only exception in all the streets that I sent to the board is Havens. Well, school zones were all set, so all the 20 mile an hour in school zones, they've already approved, simply because they're in the school zone. But Haven Street, there are areas of Haven Street that would not be considered thickly settled. So the speed limit there in that section is actually 40 miles an hour. So I've sent a number of those to the board. The other, they did come back, Mass Highway, on the request that I sent them just a week or so ago, on East Main Street from Fortune Boulevard, Beaver Street, up to the Holliston Town Line, and they indicated that should likely be in your correspondence.
We have that.
Okay. So they're going to take a look at it. It is their roadway, and they're going to go out and measure themselves. I did put the box out there, so I gave them that data. I gave them all the crash reports for that section of roadway. And as Mr. Gulliver indicated, they're going to go out with their engineers and take a look at it. The last piece of traffic information is, we met with Mass DOT, myself, Vani, down at Green Street and Route 140, and there's a number of measures they're going to undertake themselves in the spring. They're going to change the stop sign to a larger one. They're going to reposition them so that the person actually can see the sign, and when they're coming to the intersection, they're set back a distance now, 10, 12 feet from the intersection. And the concern is people go by them. They will put warning signs as you come down the roadway, Green Street from either side towards Route 140. The warning signs will actually be on both sides of the street facing that traffic coming at them. Where, you know, we drive, with the driver on the left-hand side, it just, you catch it. They're going to use the more universal signs, which have the shape of a stop sign on the sign itself with an arrow saying it's ahead, rather than, you know, the wording that we presently have. They will restrike the roadways. They're taking a look at, and they're not sure if they're going to do anything with it, but the bump in the road on 140 where the new train crossing was put in. And then working with the businesses in the area, they're going to deal with the different trees and shrubs that may be blocking line of sight from Green Street, looking up and down 140, as well as as you approach the intersection on Green Street. They had, between engineers, there had to be a dozen people from Mass DOT in the field for this meeting. We then came back here, discussed it, and then from there, we went up to Route 16 and 140, where they conducted an evaluation, a site evaluation, and met with the, excuse me, the traffic consultants back here. So we're, good three hours in which they discussed just those two intersections. So that's where we are as far as the traffic issues that are out there. Did I miss anything, Rick? Okay. And, you know, so, you know, my request would be that the board, in looking at the memos I sent you concerning the speed signs that we had already sent to Mass DOT, that the board allow us to take those signs down, and then I'll work with Scott to accomplish that.
Yeah, we'll work with the board. I'll, we'll take a vote in a second. I'll, we'll take a vote in a second. You know, this is one of the things I worry about, and you cautioned us on it. I want to thank you for, and Vani, for your work on this, to make sure the signs we're putting up are legal, they're registered with the state, and, but this is one of the things I worry about, right, is any time you go out to Worcester or Boston and start asking people how fast cars should be going on Congress Street by our town park, where we have, you know, musical performances, Days in the Park, you know, people crossing there, lots of carriages. I've seen it a number of times. You've seen it a number of times. It's just down the street from the school, and just compounding that area is the funeral homes and the way folks can park close to the intersection. So, you know, this is what I worry about, you know, when somebody from out of town is telling us how fast our cars can go. Worcester and Boston sometimes have, you know, in their infinite wisdom, but I appreciate it, and I know you did everything that you were supposed to do, and I appreciate you and Vani's work within this.
Yeah, we presented those arguments to them, particularly as it relates to the areas around the parks. You know, as you know, there's three different sections, Haywood Street, Congress Street there, Congress Street up at Tank Park, but, you know, laid it out for Mass DOT, and they came back and actually said that they would likely increase the speed limit. You know, the board, as they indicated in the correspondence that they sent to me, you know, we can take down the speed sign and put up warning signs, you know, for motorists that, you know, there's a park, you know, drive slow, there's a park, you know, things of that kind. So, if that's something that the board, in those particular areas where we know we have a large concentration of people, young people, if that's something the board wants myself and Vani to take a look at, we're happy to do it, particularly in those locations where we know, down on Haywood Street, you know, where you get, you know, there's cheerleading practices and the rest, you know, some very young kids, so.
You know, we're fortunate enough to have a great town park. We've got kids playing basketball there. We've got band concerts that go on there. I'm going through the list, knowing that you know them, but the number of young people that play there and might chase a ball into the street, again, to see that increased from twenty to thirty-five is just mind-boggling, to say the least, and I, so, you know, I agree with your recommendation, for what it's worth, chief, and rather than have it increased, I agree. But I'll go to the members of the board. Dean, any questions or comments?
No, Bill, I think you said it well. Chief, I think, you know, it can't go backwards. We're talking about thirty, now we're going to put a thirty-five, so it matters to leave it alone. And on East Main Street, when you talked about that they'll be coming in, their engineers and all that, what type of nice engineering things will they be doing?
They, you know, Jonathan Gulliver, he's the district director, so he indicated to me, I spoke to him the other day, he actually, because we've been sending so many of the traffic requests, he called me and said, is there something I can help you with? So, we discussed East Main Street. And what they do is, they have, you know, they're traffic engineers, they have a team, and as we saw with Green Street and One Forty, so they'll come out, and some of what they're looking at is, you know, they'll want me to do some radar studies, you know, so I'll put a cruiser up there with them, just to pick off what the speeds actually, you know, just as cars are traveling during the rush hour, et cetera. So, you know, we'll work closely with them. I would suspect that we'll see them within the next, you know, two weeks. They've been very responsive, and based on the data that I gave them, you know, we saved some steps there, and then, and they were appreciative of that, and then, from there, you know, their engineers will come out, and they're looking at the contours of the road, they're looking at the grade of the road. They already have the history of when, you know, the roadbed was built, you know, last, so, you know, they have some work to do on their end of it, and from there, they'll make a judgment. They will pull, and he told me that he had already pulled the warrants for those speed signs that I had indicated to the board. One of them is in Natick and the other, excuse me, in Holliston, and the other one is, you know, further towards the Ninety-Nine Restaurant. So, they'll take a look at signage, so you have that speed sign there. They are a distance away. Do they put additional speed signs in that area, whatever the determination is, as far as the speed should be? So, they're open-minded, they're willing to talk.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, but there must be so many requests that they have, they receive, and so, when they do come out, they do take it seriously, of course, and they'll come up, try to come up with something to help out.
Oh, yeah, and they always contact, you know, myself, Vani, and, you know, you schedule it at a time where everyone can make it, you know, they want, they want the input. Very good, and good people to work with.
In those areas where you'll be taking down the signs?
Yes.
Besides putting up, you know, children playing, or whatever the case may be, would you have some, on a temporary basis, some patrols?
Sure.
Having, you know, informing the, I guess, sometimes, I guess, if the motorist doesn't see the sign, they're going to think that they can go faster, or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, particularly those areas where we know you have a large concentration of kids. I mean, town park, between the two schools, you know, the Memorial School and Stacy, a lot of kids in the area, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, most certainly. We run radar there now, you know, so you see a cruiser sitting there, and, you know, they're talking to the crossing guy, but he's running radar, you know, to see if people are really exceeding the speed limit.
But as always, Chief, you know, nice job on this, and, you know, we do the best we can, and I think the work on Green Street and East Main Street, you know, is going well. John's been involved and all that, so hopefully, we can have some type of, you know, good resolution there within a few months. And on these here, you know, yeah, it's the best we can do, you know, we have to, we can't make it more of a speed than what we have now, so it's, it's good. Thank you.
But just for, just for clarity, it's twenty now, it's going to go to thirty when we remove the signs.
It'll, as a matter of law, so the sign is missing, it's now a thickly settled area. By statute, that's thirty miles an hour.
It's going to go up at town park to thirty at least.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, no, thank you for the good work. I understand the analysis. Makes sense. Go forward. It's fine.
Great. Okay, so is there a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the chief's recommendations.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Thank you. And we'll come back as, you know, the areas where we think you should put warning signs and, you know, the board can vote those and.
Thank you. Nice work.
Next, Tom.
Wish you had better news, but it is what it is. All right, next item on the agenda is Town Engineer Vani Reese regarding Milford Pond. Good evening, Vani.
Hi, Vani.
Hello, I am here tonight to give an update on the project. And I know that this project has been a long time in the works, so I wanted to show you that we actually have a plan.
Could you, just for the benefit, this happens to me on every map, I don't know if it happens to other people, could you give me some points of reference and orientation, please?
Absolutely.
Vaughn, at first I thought it was an invisible map.
Yeah.
Invisible map, I know, I'm sorry, this is not, they haven't given us a color map yet.
I think it's Reno's fault.
It's the best we have.
So, if you could give us some.
So, this is Dilla Street here.
All right.
This is Clark's Island here. East Main Street is down this way. Oh, thank you. So, Dilla Street, East Main Street.
And where's Route Eighty-five?
This is the, this is Rosenfeld Field over here. Eighty-five is right here. That's Cedar Street right there.
Okay, Cedar Street, okay.
So, the Army Corps of Engineers has been working very hard to come up with a plan that will fit within the money that we have between the Corps and the town, and will also pass muster with all of the permitting agencies. The plan at the moment is, this area right here is about nineteen acres that will be dredged from the current depth of about two feet to a depth of twelve feet. The dredged material will then be pumped, it'll be a slurry-type material, it will be pumped from here over to here, where they will fill in this area here, and they'll have a variety of different elevations. So, these circles within the circles are proposed islands, which will be between one and three feet above the water level. The intention there is to plant cedars, since this was once the old cedar swamp, so to bring back what the indigenous plants were in this area, and then, these areas around the islands will be just wetland areas, marshy areas. So, the, the status of the project is, we met, I'm going to sit down. We met with the Corps last week. Dino and Jerry and I went out to their offices in Concord. We had a long meeting with them about all the logistics of the project. They are very close to finalizing their plans and specs for this work. We have a meeting this week with Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, because, as you know, there are four varieties of birds that nest in the pond that are classified as endangered species. So, we are going to take Army Corps and us and our consultant, Tom Jenkins from GZA, will be going to talk to them about what we're planning on doing and make sure that they'll be okay with everything that we're doing. And then, we will, Tom and I will be working on putting together the permits. We will be filing an expanded environmental notification form with the MEPA program at the state. We will be filing a four oh one water quality certification form and a dredging form, that's a combined application, also with the state of Massachusetts. And then, there's the local conservation commission filing, the notice of intent. All of this work will be going on over the next couple of months. We are hoping to be able to bid this job and get it on the street by the end of June and be able to award it by sometime in September, early October.
And with that, you need release of monies, right?
Yes, we do. So, that's why I'm here.
I just had a quick question. Beyond the introduction of the new island, which is, my guess is, that's just peat material creating that island, right? And once it's dewetted, I guess is the term they use, that will be like any other island that would have been created. Let me ask this, though, where is the rest of the peat going, and how are we going to de-wet that?
It's all going, so nineteen acres will be dredged, twenty-five acres will be created. It's all going into that area. And, and you're right, the, the material is very organic, there's a lot of peat in it, so when it consolidates, it will, it will pack back down. So, we, we are creating a larger square footage of reclaimed area than we are dredged, the dredged area, but all of the material will stay in the pond. There's no, I know that there was a plan at one point to de-water that material and then dispose of it, that we're not, we're not moving it off-site, we're not doing anything like that.
Okay. And my guess is it'll be aromatic there for a while, while that peat's drying in that area?
Um, it, it may be, if that's possible, but that's part of the construction process.
I understand. I just, yeah, no, that's what some folks have raised a concern. The vast majority of folks I've talked to, though, think this is a great program, great project, and happy that the town is doing it, and happy that Dean is leading it, and we have great resources to help us with that. I just wanted to make sure we're talking about everything, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, what is it exactly that you need from us with, in terms of release? It looks like, well, I'll let you, I've got a memo.
So, the town is contributing one point eight million dollars towards this project. The Army Corps is contributing three point three one five million dollars towards the project. To date, we have contributed in cash and in-kind services about three hundred and eight thousand dollars. Because we're at the point where the Corps is finalizing design and they're going to actually be going through the bidding process, they need to get the majority of the remaining funds from us. So, they have asked us for a check for one point four one four million dollars to go in to the pool with their money so that they can actually finalize it and get it.
And you just didn't write them one?
Well, I, I was waiting till my paycheck cleared, so.
Yeah, there you go. Good answer. All right. So, why don't we do this for the benefit of everybody? Town meeting has authorized the appropriation of these dollars.
Yes.
Why don't we look for a motion to support Vani's request?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
All right. I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. I didn't know if there were, members wanted to have dialogue.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd like to say is, I think she did a nice job explaining everything, updating everything. She's been most valuable in the project since she first started. The committee continues to be energetic. We'll also be creating, probably, we have a boat ramp now, we'll probably have maybe two or three other boat ramps. We've worked with the neighbors in the area to, you know, have open space. We'll be protecting the, the four species, the habitat. We'll also be creating better water quality. It'll improve the flow into the Charles River. The phosphorus will also, that's a big thing, phosphorus will also be reduced. So, it's going forward, and hopefully, we'll be able to go off a bid in June, early July, and then after that, hopefully, the prices will come in good for us.
I'm hopeful that, on a dedication of this project, when we're finally done, that folks are going to come up with some of the old photographs of that area, of the boating that went on, to know that what we're trying to bring back. And I remember personally, I wish I could remember where, where I saw pictures of early nineteen hundreds, turn-of-the-century-type photographs with women with the parasols and the boats out there, people participating on that, on that pond, so.
Yeah, the dredged area is going to provide a really nice area for boating and fishing for the town.
Great. Thank you for your work. Brian?
Are you going to be out there with your parasol?
I am, I am.
It, it's, you know, a very environmentally important project, and I know that there, I'm sure there are other people in town that think that spending, you know, one point four million dollars to dig a hole in the lake is probably not the best way to spend that money, but the responsibility lies with us to protect the environment of this town, and it's not always an easy decision, but it's the correct decision. So, I think that the work that you've done with the committee and Dean is very, very important, very, very significant for the town, environment, and future generations of Milfordians.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items. First of all, Senator Moore and Representative Fernandez have informed us that a local aid resolution was filed by the Senate President and Speaker, which guaranteed at least a one hundred and twenty-five million increase in Chapter Seventy funding and unrestricted general government aid. Under this resolution, Milford would see an increase of seventy-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars in unrestricted general government aid and five hundred and sixty-five thousand, forty-seven dollars increase in chapter funding, uh, Chapter Seventy funding. The second item, I know I had previously reported to you that the telephone system would be in last week. We've had a slight delay in the installation. There are just a few lines that, while part of our system at Town Hall are actually outside lines outside of Town Hall, so we need to basically separate those. We're pretty much close to resolving that matter. Again, I'll keep the board apprised, but it should be another few weeks, and we should be up and running. Just want to get it correct. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Any comments or questions by?
No, Mr. Chairman, no.
Board members?
No.
All right, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, under Old Businesses, Town Administrators Report regarding IT.
Yes, the IT Task Force has been meeting. We have finalized a job description for the District Information Technology Director. We have put together a timeline that is included in your packet. It includes a salary range. The salary range is ninety thousand to one hundred and three thousand dollars. We will be looking for you to approve the, both job description and the timeline so that we can start the process to hire a new Information Technology Director. I will be also meeting with the Personnel Board Wednesday night this week. They have seen the job description, and so that we can set the position as a position here in Milford. I have, regarding the salary, looked at other towns, trying to see towns that have a population in the area that we have. When I did look at those towns, they ranged from a low of seventy-eight thousand to a high of about a hundred and sixteen thousand, Wellesley being the highest of the twelve towns that I was able to gather information on. I also looked towards the IT assessment done by Worldband. They had the salary, I thought, a little low, suggesting eighty-five thousand. a little low, suggesting 85,000. Also talked to members of the Task Force, specifically a member who is in the field of technology, and he thought the range of 90 to 103,000 could generate a great deal of applicants, and hopefully could, solid applicants. So again, tonight I would be asking you if you have any questions, one, concerning the job description, two, concerning the timeline, three, concerning the salary, and then I would like your permission to move forward, so that we can get someone in place as soon as possible to help direct us to the next step.
Rick, thank you.
Yes.
Do you have some of the, you know, look for that analysis of surrounding benchmark data from other communities, do you have any for us that-
Yes, I do, I think it might be just easier to hand you this chart here, there's three of them there, if you remember, Worldband had a recommendation of about 85,000, that was in the IT assessment, again, a couple of the communities you'll see there are significantly less in population, interestingly enough, one of them with a smaller population has one of the higher salaries.
All right, so just for the benefit of the folks at home, we're looking at-
But you can see the distinction, yes.
We're looking at a number of communities with similar population ranging from, what, 32 to, I'm sorry, 13,000 to 32,000?
Correct.
And what we have in front of us is Andover currently pays their IT 113 annually, Burlington 94,000, Concord 111, Dedham 78, Franklin pays 103,000, Lexington 95, Melrose 103, Natick 100, Needham, I'm sorry, 97,000, Wakefield 112, Wayland 83, and Wellesley 116,000, so certainly Wellesley appears to be at the high end of that spectrum.
Yes.
Okay, so I did ask for that, and I appreciate you digging that up, I know you made contact with other communities, and I appreciate that hard work before you went forward, I'll go to the members of the board, are there any questions or comments, Dean?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think this is something that we've been working on for the past probably eight, nine months, I think it's something that is most needed, we now have a job description, we have a salary range, we have a process, and I think that, you know, we should go forward and accept the recommendations of the Town Administrator, and try to get a good person in this position as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Brian?
Yeah, no, I mean, I advocated from the start, very early on, to get an independent consultant to evaluate our technology needs, and finally it was done, clearly, you know, technology is the soft underbelly of our town, and we've really got to take some big steps fast to, I think, get up to speed, so, and I think Rick has done a really nice job in putting together this proposal, and I'm happy to support it.
Yeah, I would agree, and I, you know, I want to make sure that folks generally understand that this isn't technology for the sake of technology, it's how we do business, it's how we protect the citizens' private information, it's how we protect our employees' information, no longer is many of this paper records, so if you go to a doctor's office, you're looking at electronic transcripts and electronic records, these records and these documents and this process is very vital, it's what operates our emergency 911 system, it's frankly what operates our telephones now, telephones are no longer just telephones, but part of our IT infrastructure because they're voice-over IP, so.
That's what we'll be getting shortly.
They, so it's all internet-based, and frankly, we couldn't do business without a solid IT infrastructure and a well-organized IT infrastructure, part of the problem we're solving today is just a piece of the puzzle, we know that we have overly distributed and piecemeal IT infrastructure today, we're using consultants across the board, in addition to that, we've got age servers and software, so that there's some work that needs to be done, but prior to solving all of that, if there's not an IT director to lead that, then I'm not sure we'll be doing all the right things that we need to. So, Rick, I'd agree with the comments made by the other board members, and your jumping on this and helping to solve it is, I know this is a start.
It is a start, correct.
And I appreciate that, so, is there a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I'd also vote in favor, that's unanimous, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Is there other old businesses at the town the board members would like to bring up?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Brian?
No, thank you.
Okay, new business, we have a request here from WMRC, and specifically from Dick Ferrucci writing a request consideration to Board of Selectmen, as we do annually proclaim Luisa Lake off-limits for fishing for a period of 24 hours preceding their annual fishing derby for kids on April 19.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I'd also vote in favor, that's unanimous, thank you. Next, we have a Town Administrator's recommendation regarding the Senior Center and Program Coordinator?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the position of Senior Center Program Coordinator was advertised in the Milford Daily News on February 27th, Sue Clark, the Director of the Senior Center, received three resumes, two applicants were interviewed, I was part of that interview process, as was Council on Aging Chairman Ed Roth, Jonna O'Loughlin was one of the people we interviewed, the recommendation is that we appoint Jonna to the position, I'm sure the board remembers that she was previously in that position not so long ago, and did a fantastic job, she left for a brief period of time, but I think found her true love is to come back and work at the Senior Center, so the recommendation would be to appoint Jonna O'Loughlin as the Senior Center Program Coordinator.
Okay, is there any comments?
Seconded.
Yeah, I'm happy to vote, and happy to have Jonna back, I think she's great working with the seniors and do great work, so, thank you, I also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Next, we have correspondence from Sue Clark.
If I may just-
I'm sorry.
... Mr. Chairman?
You did, you did mention that, appointment, that time again, for appointment for Animal Control, thank you, Rick, this was added to your packet just this evening, came up, there's been a request that we reappoint, where does that request come from?
It comes from the Department of Agricultural Resources, and then the actual response goes back to the Division of Animal Health subdivision of the Department of Agricultural Resources.
Okay, thank you. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 128, Sections 15 and 16, board is required to nominate an Inspector of Animals by April 1st, since this would be the last meeting prior to April 1st, the recommendation is that we nominate Rochelle Thompson-
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
... who has been the Inspector of Animals Control since 2007.
Seconded.
I'd also vote in favor, that's unanimous, thank you, Rick, for keeping me on task.
That's okay, thank you.
Next, we have correspondence from Sue Clark, the Director, Sue took time out, as you know, she's been in that position six months, and wanted to bring this board up to speed on some of the activities she's been involved in, I appreciate this type of detail and information, she's involved in grant writing, she's involved in all the activities operating the Senior Center, I'm hearing great work coming from her, so I'd just like to, through you, Rick, let her know, thank you very much for providing this update and the dedication for the Ruth Ann Bleakney, just a point of note-
Absolutely.
Ruth Ann Bleakley dedication, the sign going up April 17th at 10:00 a.m., for those people interested in attending. Are there other items or correspondence or anything that the members would like to address? Brian?
Just one item, and let me hand this down to Rick, and he can make some copies for everyone, but, you know, I read the edition of the municipal advocate that came out, and I thought it was interesting because it focused on economic development, and some of the issues that we've been talking about in terms of the Industrial Development Commission, and then also the development of downtown, and there's two articles that I handed to Rick, which I'd asked him, he disseminate to our board, also the IDC and the Planning Board, and one talks about the Marlborough Economic Development Corporation, and I think it's a very pointed, strategic article that shows how this independent corporation was established, and regularly funded through their hotel tax, and worked towards develop a economic master plan, and through that, they have courted some very significant businesses to Marlborough, and I think Marlborough has some of the similar characteristics that we have, that businesses might see as beneficial, particularly access and proximity to major roadways, so, you know, this really sets out a blueprint, I think, of the kind of work that can be done to try to encourage some economic growth, some industrial development to Milford, and the second article is more general in nature, and it basically gives a three-step process that a Industrial Development Commission might want to follow in terms of developing a municipal economic profile, developing an economic portrait of the primary industry and businesses that we have in the community, and then also creating and communicating the action plan to interested parties, so, you know, I think this provides the kind of information that, you know, has been talked about lately, it certainly lays out some examples and some ideas, and, you know, I think along with that, it might be something for the board to consider to, you know, establish a separate downtown development committee, because I think the goals and the ideas of the Industrial Development Commission, you know, really don't mesh hand in hand with your Main Street community, which oftentimes has business interests, but also residential, and some mixed-use development, so, you know, I think it might be a good idea to have a specific committee geared right towards development of the Main Street business residential areas, but, you know, I just present these articles out, circulate them, and hopefully generate some ideas for our town.
I'm glad you brought that up, I had the opportunity to read the municipal advocate as well, and, or, and look through those articles that you mentioned, I thought they were very informative, and it provides examples of ways in which Milford might proceed going forward, to see if we might be able to stimulate some of our downtown, and to see what we can do differently as it relates to commercial properties and some of the residential.
Yeah, no question.
You know, I think, you know, I don't know if you got a copy?
Yes.
Dean, did you, okay, so I think the benefit would be to get it to the IDC-
Absolutely.
... since the board members already have copies of it, and, you know, one of the things I had met with the, since our last meeting, I've met with the IDC, and specifically talked about them breaking into some subcommittees, and this would be one that I think, I think it would be worthwhile, I think when I look at the charter of the IDC, I think it has both industrial and commercial development under its charter, and I think this is exactly the type of thing that Town Meeting had in mind when it created IDC and created that charter, I'm not opposed at all to separate activity, but what I'd like to see the IDC come up with is some recommendations, and we talked about, before we create an ongoing departmental budget, that we look at initiative-based funding, so that the IDC could get kind of the ground underneath them, and build a foundation where it's demonstrated over successive years, initiatives that are, that have specific goals, and those, when those goals are met, we'd look to seed future activities that are initiatives presented to this board, I've also offered to be a liaison to the IDC, so if you have any thoughts or comments that you want conveyed, or convey them to the Town Planner yourself, there's a few things that we talked about in terms of things that were possible, what I tried to convey to that board is to be bold, to think big, to come here, and come through the board before initiatives go to planning, because this is an IDC appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and so we're kept abreast, and I'll look to keep the board abreast as I meet with the IDC as well, and if it's the new chair's prerogative, I'd like to stay on with that, and I think there's a great opportunity to create some energy between the two ports, thank you, Brian.
I'll take it under consideration.
Okay, thank you, Brian, for bringing those up, I thought those were interesting articles as well, so, you get them to the IDC, we'll be good.
I'll get them to Planning Board also, yes.
Yes, and Planning as well, thank you. Because I know in the past, just as an example, and members of the IDC, just as an example, brought up the different support that the board has had over the years, and one of the items that came up, Rick, you were there, was that, I want to tell the board members, support or lack of support for some of the mixed-use housing that was proposed through planning and through even IDC on Main Street, and, you know, somebody asked me what my opposition to that was, well, there were two things, and one of them I thought of after I left the meeting, so I want to convey to Larry while he's here, one of them was that I thought it was generally inconceived because of the absence of parking in that area, and specifically, when we look at the Tom Building and the fact that they're not able to place a dumpster on their own property, the parking, if not for the valet parking arrangement and the use of the Town Hall parking when it's not in use, I'd be concerned about where they would be parking now and maintaining viable businesses, so I thought that, what I asked them to do is go back and look at parking, and to look at the broader picture, because before we start implementing ideas, we've got to have places for people to park, and as Brian just said, develop an overall strategy before we go to put in point solutions. So, with that said, I appreciate you bringing that up, it's appropriate for the direction we're going. Next item, we have executive session. We have executive session, we've addressed the first item, an executive session prior to the start of this meeting, we have executive session on a litigation matter, we're going to be meeting with Town Council Jerry Moody, we have employment contract that we're going to be discussing regarding the Fire Tree Chief, and we're also going to be discussing employment contract for Trish.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I'll second.
All right, I'll also vote in favor, I'll take a roll call vote.
Aye, Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous, we will not be returning to open session, thank you very much.